Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting for November 14th, 2017. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'd just like to say tonight we have our interim town planner here with us, Jack Hunter. We have our new planner, has it Stephen Cole, which we just hired and interviewed, and we're glad to see him here tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
He didn't say that to me, though.
We're always glad to see Jack. But I just thought I'd introduce Stephen Cole to the public. All right. The first thing we have on the agenda is a public hearing for Lisa Crowley, Fetch and Rest Doggy Day Care, 160 North Main Street, Assessors Map 24-3-1. It's a request for a special permit to allow a commercial kennel in the Highway Commercial District per the Carver zoning bylaws, Section 2300 and 5300. Jack, would you like to?
Sure, I'll do what I can. This is a proposal for, technically, it's a commercial kennel because of the number of dogs. It's a doggy daycare. It's located at what we, I used to call Waterstone Plaza. I think it's called Carver Marketplace now, I think. We did distribute the plans to the Board of Health because with doggy daycares, we're always concerned about septic systems. And I also distributed the plans to the Animal Control Officer. There is a response from the Board of Health in here. Unfortunately, the Animal Control Officer has never responded. I don't know if she talked to the applicant or not. And lastly, there's many letters I think are in your packets regarding this project, both some concerns from the Board and recommendations from colleagues and et cetera. And I think that sets the stage.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, sir. Would you like us to sit here?
Yes, please. And use the microphone. Just give us your names.
Thank you. Before I start, my compliments to you. I've never been before you, and I practice in Bridgewater. I live on the Cape. But the Pledge of Allegiance is a wonderful thing. It's a practice that I think should be employed in other places, and so you set great example and my compliments to you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a brief or short memo here. I'd like to, I didn't bring enough copies, I'm afraid.
We can share.
Let me circulate around.
Thank you, welcome.
This will be the memo in favor of.
You're welcome.
For the record, my name is Paul Costello. I'm an attorney with an office in the town of Bridgewater.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Could you please use the microphone? It's mostly for the recordings and for the residents at home. And welcome.
I like to move around, you know. It makes me less nervous, so I'll do my best. Again, for the record, my name is Paul Costello. I'm an attorney with an office located at 44 Pleasant Street in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Lisa Crowley. As you know, she has a petition before you as the special permit granting authority to seeking approval for a doggy daycare business located down at the Carver Marketplace location, which, as you all know, is right off of Route 44. The provisions of the bylaw specifically call for, well, let me back up for a second. We are located in the Highway Commercial Zone, and this proposed use is permitted by special permit by the planning board in this case. And we fall generally into the category of a commercial kennel. And by definition, in Section 6 of your bylaws, a commercial kennel is defined as a use, at least in part, that provides grooming and boarding for dogs. Obviously, if a business is going to groom and board pets, a natural offshoot of that would be caring for those pets while they're at that location. So I will say we will provide daycare, but we're not going to be providing any kind of grooming or boarding. There'll be no overnight stays or anything of that kind. This is an operation that will operate from, or proposes to operate from about 7:00 in the morning through to about 6:00 in the evening. And the way it works is that clients would come in in the morning on their way to work, drop off their pets. Lisa would care for them during the day, and customers would come back in the evening to pick them up, and that's how it would, that's how it would work. The proposal or anticipation right now is that she would operate five days a week, again from 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening. Some consideration is being given to a possible availability on Saturdays. If she were to do that, the hours of operation would be limited probably from 7:00 in the morning to perhaps 2:00 in the afternoon. But that would be something that she would make a judgment call on depending upon the popularity of the business and obviously the demand for a need like that on Saturday. No consideration is being given to doing anything on Sundays. This is, as far as we know, this is a business that's not available in the town of Carver. To the best of our knowledge, this would be, you know, the first of its kind. And her target market are millennials and single working people with pets. Obviously, if you've got a working husband and wife and they're gone all day, this gives them an opportunity to provide their pets with care, and there is, you know, we've, you know, researched this pretty carefully, and there's significant demand for this kind of a service. Generally, I think it would be a service that would provide an obvious benefit to the town generally and obviously very specifically to the people who would take advantage of the service. I think the location in this shopping center is such that, you know, there would be no issues as far as traffic is concerned. Access to the Carver Marketplace Shopping Center is, you know, right off of Route 44. The parking lot is huge, and, you know, the location that she's going to move into is abutted on either side, I believe, by two units that presently are vacant. So, you know, this really, in terms of where she's proposing to go and for the landlord in question, it's a win-win because, as I say, there are, I think, up to six vacant units in this complex right now, and so Lisa's arrival, I think, would be a benefit to everybody. And for the others, you know, in the shopping center, if you're bringing new customers into the area, you know, it provides potential benefit to the other tenants in the marketplace complex. So, as I say, I think that, given the fact that this is a business or a service that's not provided in town, there is nothing about what she will do that will, you know, in any way be detrimental to the area or to the best interests of the town. And for those reasons, you know, I would strongly urge you to approve her application. And on a personal level, this is something that, she's been in this business in terms of caring for, you know, for pets for 26 years. She doesn't look old enough to be at anything that long, but in any event, she's been at it a long time. This is a lifelong dream that she's hoping to realize, and again, with your help, that'll happen. And we're ready to answer any questions if you have any.
How many dogs would you take in a day?
So, I would hope between 35 and 40. Obviously, some days you might not have that many, other days might have just enough. It depends on people's schedules. So usually, it goes by square footage. It's over 2,800 square feet, and the rule of thumb is about 75 square feet per dog.
So you're going to have the dogs inside the building as well as outside?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Outside is more bathroom breaks, get some fresh air. They wouldn't be outside as long as they would be inside, but there would be frequent bathroom breaks, you know, every couple of hours. It wouldn't be that many dogs out at one time because the dogs will be separated into different enclosures, small dogs, big dogs, so only one group would be out at a time.
So how many people would you, employees would you have here?
It's usually one person per 15 dogs, 10 to 15 dogs.
Wow.
So it would be me as well as a couple others, when we get to that point, obviously.
And so people would pack out front, bring their dog into the building, through the front of the building?
Yes.
And so people wouldn't be going around back to put the dogs?
Correct. No, there's, when you go into Carver Marketplace in that unit, there's like a front lobby separate from where the dogs would be, and no one would be permitted beyond that separate area. So they would hand it over to me or one of the staff members, and then from there. And as far as when they're picking them up, same procedure, the dog would be walked out to the lobby.
I guess the question is, is that, how do you prevent the dogs from barking and, you know, making a disturbance? Can that be controlled if they're outside?
Generally, dogs that are going to doggy daycare are well-socialized dogs. They're used to going out to dog parks and interacting with other dogs, or going for car rides with their owners, in a sense, they're their children. So they're very well-socialized dogs. There's no way to get rid of dog barking at all in a daycare, but it's very usually minimum, just when they're engaged in play with each other. It's a kennel-free situation, so it's not like they're stuck in cages and barking because they're upset. They're playing with other dogs. So if there is a dog that is acting, say, erratically with their barking, there's ways to handle that as well, you know, leading them away from the area, distracting them with something else. But if there is a nuisance dog that just isn't, you know, reacting to any type of discipline, so to speak, you know, then it's, daycare situation is not for them. Maybe they benefit from a dog walker or something else.
Anybody else on the board would like to, if you have any questions?
Waste, however you address that. Five to 40 dogs, that's going to be a lot of waste per day.
So as far as when they're outside having their bathroom breaks, the way that we're enclosing it is it's going to be stockade fencing, and then we're going to put like a border around the bottom of the stockade fencing, and that border's going to contain pea stone for drainage. And then astroturf will be on top of that as far as more comfort for their feet, and so dogs won't ingest the gravel. So the poop obviously will be picked up in bags and discarded into the dumpster, the waste basket, and then the area will be disinfected and hose down, maybe multiple times a day. As far as inside, same procedure. If they have a solid poop, we're going to have to pick it up in a poopy bag and put it in the trash can, and then a dumpster. At the end of the day, all the trash will be discarded.
Actually, this is for Jack. I didn't see anything from the fire department.
I did not ask them. In hindsight, I think I should have, and I will tomorrow give them a set of proposals.
Just where you have parking stalls behind there? Is there a fire lane back there?
There isn't.
There isn't? Are there sand pipe hookups back there?
What is it?
For the water fire suppression, sand pipe hookups, where the fire department would come in and hook up to the building.
Um, do you have?
Well, just where you're putting the enclosure back there.
So in the enclosure back there, there's nothing in the way. Obviously, we would have Big Safe come in because there is some gas lines and there is a septic cover back there, but where we're positioning the fencing, it doesn't look like it's going to disrupt anything. And there would also be on that outside enclosure a fence, so if there was access needed, it would be able to be accessed into the back door.
I still think the fire department should look at that.
Your concern is the access around the building.
Normally, then, I've never seen anything like that off the back of a building. Normally, they keep that clear.
Yep.
Emergency vehicles.
Yep.
To pull right up to the building.
Good question. I should have sent that to him. I will.
The appliance company has one. Can we say that?
I'm good.
The appliance.
Chairman, do you have any questions?
Well, Chad jumped to the fencing and the waste and traffic drop-off. Now, I guess what I would, as far as traffic is concerned, you're going to be, if you are at your full potential, you could have 35 cars coming in and going within that hour's time for, you know, drop-offs and pickups. I guess.
It's a three-hour window. There would be drop-offs from 7:00 to 10:00, and then pickups from 3:00 to 6:00. But if people wanted to make different arrangements, you know, I'd be willing to work with customers.
And the, in the event that this is fenced in, you said that you were going to put pea stone down for the base, but would there be some type of privacy fencing also?
Yeah, it's going to be six-foot wooden stockade, so the dogs can't see out, people can't see in. And then the stockade fence would be turned, I don't know what the wording is, but turned backwards, so the smooth side would be facing in, so that would prevent dogs from, like, scaling or climbing. And they're supervised 100% of the time as well.
And then I guess, again, back to the waste. So as far as removing that amount of waste, you're going to put it in a dumpster, but I mean, that, again, that's a lot of waste. Do you have an arrangement? Would you have an arrangement with somebody to have them come in more than once a week? Did I see that you are going to have twice a week pickup on that?
Um, if that's what it takes, I would.
And to you, Jack, would that be a Board of Health question, obviously?
Actually, I think it's your question, and it's a good one. I had made a list of issues or concerns, not issues, that you guys have run into with the previous dog care. This is all reminding me of what happened on Center Street. I think it was not Center. Yes, Center.
You know, we had special conditions, I think.
Quite a field.
They had to pick up the waste a couple times a week.
Yes.
Anything else?
I mean, I know you guys probably have questions as well, and then, of course, I know that we ran into questions concerning, you know, these dogs are going to, obviously, they would have to be licensed, and who's going to be responsible for seeing to the licensing, that, you know, the dogs are legitimately licensed and tagged with their proper rabies shots and inoculations.
Is that something that you would expect?
Yes.
Because we did, yeah, we did that with a smaller kennel that was in town.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we.
This protocol, when you have that many dogs together, you know, making sure they have the proper vaccinations, spayed and neutered by a certain age, as well as flea and tick prevention, it's, you know, you've got to take that all into consideration. And absolutely, I would make sure, you know, there's, people have to come and fill an enrollment package, and there's like a trial base for the dog to make sure it'll fit into daycare, but before they can even start, they have to prove that the dog has had X, Y, and Z done.
When you say that you're going to have a gravel base, does that mean that you're going to have to break out the asphalt that's there to put in a gravel base?
It'll just be poured on top. That's why that base will be established around the fence. That'll keep any runoff as well as keeping the stones from sliding in.
You put the stone right over the asphalt?
Mm-hmm.
And then like carpeting over that?
Yeah.
Interesting. Any questions?
On the map, is it the property labeled G? Is that where the?
Yes.
Unit G, correct.
Unit G, okay. And then I noticed on the application as well, it said a small retail section. Is that going to be?
That's something that maybe I could grow into. It would just be in that front lobby area, you know, just like some specialty cookies, collars, some biscuits, just things like that, just very minimal retail.
I guess it goes to Will.
Thank you. A lot of the questions have already been answered that I would have asked. You refer to an enrollment package. Can you provide us with that, a sample of that documentation, so that way we can review that? That would be something that we would put in our package.
Mm-hmm.
It would be good to know what your criteria is for enrollment for the pets?
Mm-hmm.
And what you're looking for. I would assume that the licensing and rabies documentation be in there.
It's almost like a survey, like how the dog's behavior is. Yes, the flea and tick, making sure it's spayed and neutered, has the proper vaccinations and the licensing. But it's more information that me, as the business owner of taking these dogs in, so I have a better understanding of the dog's behavior before putting them in with the other dogs.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, has it shown aggression towards people? Has it shown aggression towards other dogs? Does it have guarding problems where, like, it would stand over a toy and be threatening to another dog?
Yep.
So a lot of that is in that, and then obviously liability waivers as well, to protect myself as well as the business.
And if that's something that you'd just provide to us, that'd be great. Obviously, I'm looking for those same checkmarks of, to establish on, you have quite a few letters of recommendation from your peers that are very good.
Thank you.
But I also, I want to make sure that you're dotting your i's, crossing your t's on your applications, you're not just going to take any pet in there. My concern is the fitness center, and also it shows that a day cast, dance studio that's down there. That's a couple of my concerns. The other thing that I wanted to ask for is, you talk about the pen. I'd like you to provide us with a design of the pen and what, to include the berm and what the material's going to be, and a maintenance plan on that.
Okay.
So that way, we know that over a certain amount of time, that will be maintained. It'll be part of the documents that, of your permit, if it was to be granted, that'll be part of the documentation that the town would have to go, fall back on, and to make sure that you take care of those things. I need to address how your pets, your criteria with your customers, how the pets are going to be brought into your facility. Obviously, they're not just going to run through the parking lot, they'll be all on a chain, I hope.
Right.
But coming in and going out, what's your criteria on trying to maintain the pets in your facility, other than them just running through the door when mom and dad show up to come and get their pets?
Right. So I had said that when they come in, there's only access into the lobby, and then there's actually a door before you get into where the dogs would be contained for the day. So the dogs have to come in on a leash. Either myself or another staff member will take the dog from the owner and bring it back in with the other dogs. And the same procedure would happen when they leave. When the owner shows up, the dog will be led out to them on their leash into that lobby area, and then they go home for the day with their owner.
Wonderful. And while I have it in my thought, I want to make sure that this board does this. I'm going to recommend to the chairman to ensure that either Stephen or Mr. Hunter sends a letter to the Board of Selectmen addressing the dog officer not responding to this board's request for information. Obviously, in our past doggy daycare facilities, they had an intricate part on making sure and maintaining, and with visits to the site, making sure that all the documentation was there on the pets, all the pets were licensed, and ensure that the applicants maintaining those. And I have a concern that we didn't get a response from the dog officer. So I think we should address that with a simple letter notice up to Mike, to the Board of Selectmen, to have them engage that and find out, and get some input. You know what I'm looking for.
I know exactly what you're looking for.
That's internal. I think I'm okay for now. I think a couple of the things that have been addressed by my other board members and the issues, my most important thing is the design standard of your pen, and also those documents that I'd like to attach to our.
Okay.
Application would be wonderful. As far as your letters that you receive from your peers, they're very good.
Thank you.
So obviously, you have some very good experience, and you're very well with animals, so.
Thank you.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just, just for the record, we tried to reach out to the ACO Animal Control Officer. Did you, Lisa, you tried as well, to no avail, I believe? I haven't talked to you in a while.
She responded one time to my phone call and said that she would like to get together and walk through the property, and I said, okay, is this the best number to get back in touch with you? Because I needed to get the lockbox code from the landlord to get her in. And that was the one and only time I did speak to her. I repeatedly tried calling, leaving her messages, to the point that her voicemail box was full, and I could no longer leave messages.
And I guess there's been a change in as how the ACO is administered here. It's now through the police department. I did talk to the police chief several times and made sure that the plans and your proposal was given to the ACO. I share Mr. Sinclair's concern. The only other one that I've dealt with when I was here, I don't know if you've dealt with one prior, is that they were very involved.
Absolutely.
And they developed a whole protocol about the licensing, about the vaccinations, rabies shots, et cetera, about site visits. They inspected the facility. It was a very professional response to your concerns. And I'm a little taken back why that hasn't happened. I wish I was here full-time so I could take care of it better, but we'll let Stephen help with that on Monday. But we'll make sure, we try to get a response. In your packet, you also have a letter from the Board of Health. They are fine with the proposal, provided there's no grooming, and Lisa knows that. If she chooses to go to a grooming, then I'm going to strongly urge to come back to you and vis a vis the Board of Health, because then we have septic concerns, and there would have to be a whole Title V examination and that kind of thing. I am, I will share with you, Lisa, the protocol that we did for the other doggy daycare, and there was dumpster pickup. I think it was every other day. I may be a little off on that, but they had probably half the dogs you had, so I am concerned that you're going to have to come up with a better solution than just when you need it. It has to be a constant turnover on that. We also, if you remember, we had issues or concerns about the fencing and dogs burrowing and things like that. I know we had them put in a particular kind of fence that I can share with you that prevented any kind of abuse that way. It's a little, that was in a residential area, a grassed area. It's not paved, so maybe it's not as much of a factor, but it's something to be concerned of.
And just one other question for me is, what, and I think you talked about it, but the liquid waste from the dogs when they're outside. You say you take a hose and wash down the area, and then you put disinfectant down? So where does, where is that going to drain? Is that contained in the pen area?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the pea stone will absorb most of it, and then eventually it'll dissipate on its own. It's really the surface area, you know, will be disinfected, so the dogs won't have an outbreak or anything like that.
Do you change the stone after a period of time?
I would imagine so, yeah. I mean, anything that needs to be addressed, most certainly I would address, but the disinfectant will kill any kind of, you know, bacteria or illnesses associated with the dogs. It's a kennel, you know, safe, dog-safe type of disinfectant.
Now, the outside kennels, does it have a cover of, a roof or canvas cover over it? Is it just open?
You can put up like an EZ app, so it'll help with, give the dog shade, as well as if we're out there in the elements, it'll give us a little bit of cover when we're standing there waiting for them to do their business. there waiting for them to do their business.
So when it rains, the rain will go down over this area?
Right.
All right, if there aren't any more questions from the board, I'll open this up to the public.
One thing, Mr. Chair, the disinfectant that you'll be using for the waste, can you provide us that information? I want to make sure that the, we're all on well waters here and the runoff.
There's no well water there. There's public water, but still a concern.
Still a runoff with the...
Absolute concern.
So if you could provide us...
If I recall, well, we did have them provide the product and limited them to that product, I recall.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, and so I'll just open this up to the public if there was, if there's anybody that would like to speak. You can stand up, come in if you could, use the microphone and talk. Yep, please. Can you just give us your name and address and speak into the microphone? And if, and what we'll do is if you could, if you have any questions, you can address the questions to me.
Okay.
Then I'll see if we can have, I don't want people...
Yeah, going back and forth.
Going back and forth.
I'm Rob Kirkland, 20 Montello Road in Plimpton. Basically, right behind the plaza there. My major concern is the noise from the dogs. Now, I maintain a property in Kingston, the old O'Donald Sand and Gravel building, that has the same basic dogs, you know, it's a daycare, they have a pen out back, and the dogs are loud. And I work in Situate where they have, you know, another one right next to the road. The dogs are loud out in the pen. And behind the plaza, there's always something going on, like you have the forklifts going, you have them unloading, you know, stuff for cover appliance, which it's not the dog's fault, but they're going to start barking. And I think that's where there's going to be a major, because if you live behind that plaza, like since they've removed all the trees, added tractor supply, the noise level from that plaza is like quadrupled at my house. Now, the other night at, well, it was morning, five o'clock in the morning at the Dollar Store, they were getting a delivery. The guy has his doors open with his radio. I could hear that in my house with all the windows shut. So the amount, it's, I know people say that it's not, the dogs aren't going to be loud, but you can't, you can only, you can only do so much. And that's where my major concern is. And like I said, I know it firsthand by dealing with it in Kingston. And they're going to be loud. So you're going to be, you're going to have a lot of neighbors. And that's the thing with all these other businesses, there isn't any residents backing up to these buildings. The one in Kingston, there isn't any residents near it. The one right on the Driftway, there isn't any residents right around it. The one in Pembroke, right off the highway, there isn't any residents because of the dogs barking. I mean, that's, I mean, as far as a business out front, I wish you all the luck in the world, you know? But that's where my concern is, is the whole neighborhood behind us is just losing any piece we have.
I thought we, I know we did on the tractor trailer, we had hours of delivery, but I'm not so sure on the old plaza whether we, that was long before my time.
Before mine.
Before my board, you know, whether we had any delivery hours.
It was before my time.
Yeah, before your time.
Yeah, tractor supply isn't bad.
We said hours.
Oh, you said hours there, yeah. I don't know. I know with the old plaza, it did have a thing, no parking overnight out front, but I don't know, we always have to fight about dumpsters. It's mostly with the Dollar Store. But, I mean, the sound travels unbelievable behind that plaza.
Right.
It's, you know, it's, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you want to respond to that?
If I could.
Yeah, if you could.
You're working the end base.
Yeah, at work. I'm home at three thirty every day.
Okay, all right. We're not going to be talking about forty dogs out, you know, barking, you know, whether there's any disturbance or what have you. They're not going to be there in the weekends. They're not going to be there in the evening. Again, the hours of operation are such that, you know, it's not going to interfere with majority of the time that you or any of your neighbors are there. I'm just curious, you said the number twenty, Montello?
Yes.
I went out and observed number ten. I think it was number ten.
At the beginning of the road?
Well, as you come in.
Second on end.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
So your home, with respect to its proximity to that home, is where?
Excuse me, excuse me. In order to, if you could use the microphone, please. And, you know, I just don't want a bunch of talking in the audience. It's just difficult to handle that way.
These are photographs that I took of Montello, and this is from the, from the point on Montello that's parallel with the back doors to the unit that Lisa was occupying.
You know, I just want to say is probably before we conclude this meeting tonight, we will probably want to go for a site visit so we can, we can take a look at some of these things. And we can discuss that later, you know, we'll see where the pens are, see what the buffering is, see how far the neighbors are away, and we'll have to schedule a site.
If you're going to do that, I will spare you any further argument on that issue. I was down on Montello with specific concerns about what, you know, the concerns that you've raised, trying to get an idea of what proximity any of the houses have to where Lisa will be located. This is a big complex. There's a tractor or equipment supply place that's down. Now, are you on that end of Montello down there?
Right behind that.
I would respectfully, you know, estimate that in terms of where Lisa will be located, the distance from where she will be and where you are is maybe two hundred and fifty to three hundred yards. It's a pretty good distance. And I would also point out that you have, and as the photographs will show, there is a large wall of hemlocks located on the, you know, the rear boundary of the plaza. That, look, it doesn't eliminate all noise, but it certainly would assist with respect to, you know, the buffer that it would provide. But again, if the members of the board are going to go down to view the site, then, you know, I won't take up any more of your time on that argument.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Kristin Kirkland, 20 Montello. Unfortunately, if we can hear a radio, we can hear a dog from a tractor trailer. So if the pen is out back of, I think it was G, Unit G, how is the Dollar Store going to get their deliveries? They back in right now, so they're going to back up directly next to the fence of the dogs?
Well, we'll take, we'll have to take a look at that when we do the site visit. And, but we can see if that question can be answered.
And I know the plaza itself doesn't have well water, but we do. And there's an aquifer right there that's been noted on a couple of the different maps, and the whole neighborhood has well water. So the runoff, you know, is it going to be absorbed? Is it going to be changed? You know, what are the restrictions that she has to follow? I think that's really important. I drink that water. So the dumpsters, to go back to the hours that were supposedly established, the last, today we were up at four with waste management. I've called headquarters. Last Thursday, we were up at four, seventeen. Last Tuesday, it was four oh eight. It's a little cranky today.
For what business was this?
They were emptying the dumpsters, so...
For the whole, for the whole?
For a different, like, not tractor supply, I think it was the Dollar Store. So we already have noise issues and it magnifies all the way to our house. So, you know, I really have a hard time with the dogs. As I said, my husband, he takes care of a building that already houses a doggy daycare, so the noise is terrible. You can't even pull up without them barking. There's signs all over, don't, you know, engage the dogs, don't, you know, say anything to the dogs, because that's all you can hear is them barking. And, let's see, the hours, it's kind of vague, I'm sorry. You know, seven, six, maybe some overnight, Monday through Friday, maybe a Saturday, but definitely not a Sunday. I don't know, I think it has to be more clear. I think the hours of operation has to be standardized. They can't, if she needs to extend her hours, she needs to come back, because then that affects us. Six o'clock at night, I'm home. You know, I leave at six in the morning and I'm home by then. I don't want to hear dogs. My dog doesn't bark. You know, and if, if the hours are not going to be adhered to, what's going to be done? You know, you guys don't live there, so, you know, we can talk all we want, but we're the ones that's going to have the results of the noise and everything else. So that's my concern. So we can say all we want here, but as we know now, even with the, you know, the rules of dumping things in the back, or emptying, I should say, they're not adhered to now. What are we going to do here that's going to make this happen? Let's see. And if the noise has become a problem, do you do one of those like mechanical noises so the dogs can't bark or hear, you know, to keep the noise down? I don't know.
What's a mechanical noise?
I don't know, they make these low pitch or high pitch frequencies that the dogs, would affect the dogs.
That's stumping.
I don't know, like, you know, you're putting a commercial kennel in an industrial spot that abuts neighborhood. So, you know, my concerns are very great. You know, and everything here is just, it's just too vague. It has to be stated. It has to be clear, has to be concise. If she doesn't follow the rules, what happens? What are the repercussions?
Well, if you complain and come to the board, something will have to be done about it, because they have to adhere to the rules that we set down.
So what happens if the rules aren't followed?
If the rules aren't followed, the board could have another public hearing. They could revoke the license. The building commissioner could put a cease and desist on the property. I mean, it goes all the way up the ladder, just like any business.
So from here, is it's just an open meeting to discuss the permit? Where do we go from here? What's the next step?
Well, probably we'll listen to everybody's concerns tonight. The board will go for a site visit and we'll actually take a look at the conditions on site, and then we'll probably have another meeting, schedule another meeting.
They'll continue the public hearing to another date.
Okay.
And they'll have another opportunity. And then at some point, they'll close it and decide what to do.
So it's not an open when you decide, it's closed?
Oh, it's, no, they close the public hearing so there's no more testimony.
Okay.
No, no, it's always open.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So this hasn't ways to go yet. This is just the beginning tonight. And we'll listen to everybody's concerns.
In response, for the record, in terms of the hours of operation, right now, what is planned is Monday through Friday, seven to six. No overnight, no boarding, no grooming. I want to be very clear on that. That's, that's the intent. Some consideration right now is being given to perhaps, depending upon how things would go. Opening for a limited period of time on Saturday, and I would say that to the extent that there are those concerns, particularly in light of, you know, it's a weekend, we would be willing to condition any kind of Saturday operation on coming back before you to, you know, to revisit that issue if Lisa decides that that's in her best interest.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Richard Jackson, number four, Heather's Path, for those of you who don't know me. I have about two hundred feet of road frontage on Montello. I think I'm physically located the closest to the shopping center. I just want to reiterate the Kirkland's concerns and just point out that the noise back there is always amplified by the reflection off the building. So it sounds, what doesn't sound too bad when you're back there, because I go to the gym and sometimes we work out in the parking lot, but when you're standing in the yard, the reflection off the building is very loud, so, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Bilbin, 26 Gate Street. Some of the comments that I wrote down as I was listening is the fence, they're saying the good side is going to be toward the dogs. You can't do that. The good side has to be outside to the public area. With the fence issue also is that I think cover appliance back there has a chameling fence back there too, so. The health records, most definitely, to keep track. I have two dogs and they play rough in boxes and they bark like crazy. I only put one out at a time because I don't want them going after my neighbor's dog and having a barking fest, all right? That's just two. Where I live, I can hear on the weekends the racetrack in Middle Bowl. It travels. That noise travels. I kind of have an issue, even though I'm not in a butta, all right, but the drainage of this, the way it sounded, is there's going to be asphalt, then pea stone on top of that, and then astroturf above that. Well, there has to be some type of drainage where this is going to go to. If you spray it down or whatnot, it has to be the dry wells or something where all this fluid that comes out is going to go to. And then you have the smell issue too. I mean, if this is just going to be dispersed this way and that way, it's going to travel and it's going to smell. The hours, I mean, I'd rather go the whole way personally, give them the right to open on Saturdays when they want to, just give thirty days' notice or whatnot to let you guys know that, hey, give them that. That way they don't have to keep coming back and forth and then paying the money for the fees and everything. Noise for the neighbors, I put that out there. I mean, because it's going to be noisy. You can't help it. There's going to be noise when the dogs go outside, all right? And then, as always, you guys are awesome with it, but mark the locations of where this fence is going to be and everything. Probably say that anyways, but I just want to reiterate that. The big thing is the drainage, because we're all on, we're all on well water around here and granted, I live over here, but people are there.
Although the board of health agents did say it was okay. We could, we could take a look at, you know, maybe take a second look at that, just make sure.
Just the drainage issues, because I said, you have other businesses that are around there, that the smell issue may be an issue. And catch it before it gets out of line. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Christine Joy from 10 Duke Street Road in Plimpton. And my only recommendation would be consideration of eliminating the outdoor pen. The dogs could be trained to use space inside the building, and that way you wouldn't have the barking issues and the waste would be contained within the building. That's just something I'd like to throw out there.
Anyone else? Why don't we, seeing, seeing no other hands, why don't we schedule a site visit? And then we'll continue this to next meeting. Does that work?
You're looking at the wrong guy.
No, but he does a stat till Monday. This is, Stephen does a stat till Monday, so... That's when you should have it, then.
My, I, you know, obviously, that's what you usually do is go, your next meeting is the twenty-eighth. That's not a problem, just you got the holidays next week, right?
Uh-huh.
That's all. I had a list of things to make sure that Ms. Lisa and her attorney can take care of, that...
We did have a list from the last doggy daycare.
And I want to share that with her, yes.
Yeah.
But anyway, just...
You're gonna speak to her now about that or just gonna give the list later?
Make sure you get us an enrollment package. Make sure you get us a more defined design of the pen. I think we need an operation, you know, what we call in the business an O and M plan, operation and maintenance plan. Make sure you have your procedures, your hours. I will give you what the previous doggy daycare gave us, was very well done and the board liked that, if I recall.
Yeah.
Something to consider, that the board at the last doggy daycare had a six-month window or maybe a year window when you revisited it after a year, just to see how they're doing. It actually worked out. I think drainage is something that we should look at and I think your landlord should be aware of what you're doing with that drainage or if there is an issue with the drainage. I, I'm not familiar with the process you're trying to use here, but it's something, uh, of concern. And I will send you the decision they did, the protocols, the designs that we did for that other doggy daycare. That's all.
Thank you, Jack.
Excuse me?
Yes? Sure, just come up?
Hi, uh, my name's Steve Cohen. I live in Heather's Path also. Um, and that street is right, you know, it's off Montello going in away from the, uh, plot, the back of the plaza. One of the things, you know, I've lived there for almost twenty years and one of the things that I see all the time is that, you know, there's a lot of people that actually walk their dogs along Montello because of, as you go further down, there's the industrial parks, a lot of people are walking their dogs. So, I think that's, you know, if there's dogs outside, that's even gonna increase. That, that's an, you know, an incentive for the dogs to start barking 'cause they know there's another dog on the other side of the fence. And, um, the whole, the whole back of that property is, is all tarred. So, I have a real concern about, um, the drainage. I mean, I, I find it, I, I know that this gentleman here said that the board of health, um, agent was fine with it. I just, I, I, I just can't imagine how he could be fine with it when, where would it go? Where would all the urine go from forty dogs every day? I have, I have, let me finish.
Of course.
I have two dogs of myself, okay? A German Shepherd and a, a Golden Retriever. We, my wife and I, we spend all ti- and we have a, my dogs are trained to go out along our driveway where it is all crushed stone. And yeah, I can rinse it off and I pick up the poop, we pick up the poops all the time. There, there's just two dogs, it, you know, after two or three days, there's a lot of poop. And I just can't imagine with forty dogs, they're not gonna, I mean, you don't want, I mean, I can't imagine the landlord would want them peeing or pooping inside of his building. I, I mean, he'd have to be insane to allow that to happen. So, I don't see how they, they could do anything else but have it outside. But then, of course, then it's like I said, where is it all gonna run off? I mean, it's, it's, it's all tar. And if it's gonna run off anywhere, it's gonna run into, it's gonna run off the back of it into Plimpton, where, you know, where Rick Jackson lives and the Kirklands live and there's another family that's not even here, that, uh, you know, a couple other families, actually, that are all behind that property. And I would, and I would argue, too, that it's, that Mr. Costello said that it's two hundred and fifty to three hundred yards away. I don't think so. I don't even think the back of that building is, is a hundred yards. So, I, it's a lot closer than that. From, from, you know, where Montello is to the back of the building. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, we'll take a look at that when we do a site visit.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted, the only thing I was gonna say is that in Carver, the board of health doesn't review drainage. That's all I was gonna say.
Okay, all right. All right, so, uh, when is everyone available for a site visit?
It's gonna have to be early. Or a Saturday.
I'm, uh, I'm on, I could probably do it Tuesday. Other than that, I'll be unavailable. That's the only window I got. I have obligations this weekend and I don't know when my next available date will be after Tuesday for anything.
Yeah, things are getting busy for everybody. Tues- would Tuesday work? What time Tuesday? It gets, it gets dark so early now, so we'd have to be...
Could probably be... I can make three thirty.
All right.
Unfortunately, I am unavailable at three thirty for the next three weeks. I have, uh, obligation from three thirty to five thirty every day.
Uh, okay. I can do three thirty. Could you?
But I would very much well want to be a part of some type of site walk.
If I went there, I could take you, we could revisit the site. If you contacted me, we could, uh, just go out and take a look.
Okay.
Okay, we could do something like that, we could arrange that. Three thirty Tuesday. I mean, I guess if that's, I, I, I can do it. I'll try to do it, I will do it. All right? Everything's busy, but, yeah.
Maybe you want to make sure the applicant's available?
Yeah, uh...
I'll be there.
Would somebody be there?
I'll be there.
And, and if you could, for us, even if you took chalk or something, would, if you could just mark out in the parking lot where the pens are gonna be?
It, it's already there.
The pens are there?
No, the, the markings are there.
Oh, the markings are there, okay.
Yeah.
That's good, so you were thinking ahead. That's good, you knew this was gonna happen. All right, it all depends upon you.
Twenty-first, three thirty.
Okay, so, so that's gonna be Tuesday, so I don't forget, the twenty-first at three thirty.
And I could try to meet you there before that? At three thirty, I have to be on the road.
Yeah. Okay, uh...
Make a motion to set the public, um, the site walk for, uh, Tuesday at three thirty.
Second up.
So, we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that was unanimous. So, we'll do the site one, so then we want to, uh, schedule the next meeting, the continuation. And that will be for seven o'clock?
Um, you have a hearing already at seven on the twenty-eighth, I'd suggest seven fifteen.
Okay, we could do that.
Trying to take care of this stuff. You're not. The twenty-eighth. Then you have to make sure, it, you, you need to make sure four of you are there and see if the applicant wants to hear this with four. It's a special permit, you need at least four to be in the positive for approval, so it's up to the applicant whether to continue to the twenty-eighth with four of you or go to December twelfth, hopefully with five of you.
Can we do it remote?
Pardon me?
Can we do that meeting remote? Can I?
No.
No?
Will we all be here? Will four of us be here for the next, uh, for the twenty-eighth? I can be here. Will, will you be here?
Yeah. As long as everything is good.
Kevin? Chad?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we may not, so we will have one, two, three. We may not have, and so the following meeting, will you be available?
I'll be.
Well, maybe we should put it off to the following meeting then. Is that all right, if we?
We'd prefer to have the, the full board, uh, for that meeting next allows you to all be present. We'd, we'd prefer that day.
December twelfth at seven.
Okay, so that'd be December twelfth at seven o'clock.
Make a motion to, uh, continue the, the special permit till December twelfth at seven twenty. Sound like a good time.
Okay. Well, be- before we used to just schedule, from a former planner, we used to just schedule everything at seven and then...
Statute says it should be time and pla- specific time and place.
What's that?
Statute of specific time and place.
So, we don't do that anymore?
No, we do. What would you like, Stephen?
He's gonna show up.
He's gonna show up.
You're in good hands.
What, what other, what other? What other, uh, items do we have for?
You are gonna have a couple public hearings for the twelfth, um...
Okay.
That we haven't scheduled yet, we're gonna do it if we ever get to the agenda, yes. So, I'd suggest you just kick it off right at seven and...
Seven for this one?
For this one.
But then, then the rest, we'll figure out.
Oh, man, my motion to sub.
One at a time.
Right.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, so, uh, we have a motion, uh...
Second up.
And a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
So, December twelfth, seven PM here.
And we'll see you Tuesday, the twenty-first.
And I will email you everything and, and I'll try to do a little memo to you on what we're expecting.
Uh, it's, it's for the, it's just for board members only and, uh, and one person, Lisa will be there, that'd be fine, that's, that's, it's just for us.
But basically, when you meet, um, front and back or?
Um, we'll prob- uh, I think we're most interested in the fr- in the back, what's, what's gonna happen in the back.
Okay.
Okay? So, so, uh, we'll be at the site at three thirty Tuesday, the twenty-first. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a problem, yeah. The wind attacks, it's right there.
All right, next on the agenda, we have an approval not required plan. It's, uh, Clark Griffith Trust, South Main Street and Indian Street.
Mr. Chairman, this is actually the town's application. I know even before, when I was here, Mr. Griffith had been putting some of his property into conservation restrictions. Uh, he would now like to donate some land to the Conservation Commission. The town, the, the town administrator has asked GAF to put together a Form A and I'll let Brian explain it.
Thank you, Brian Grady with GAF Engineering here for the town and for Mr. Griffith. Uh, Mr. Hunter's correct. Uh, Mr. Griffith, Griffith has been, uh, divesting himself of some of his properties and this one, he's looking to donate to the Carver Conservation Commission. It's, already has a conservation restriction on the piece of land. Uh, we have this new plan before you tonight. It's gonna reduce. Copy here for you with, uh, parcel highlighted.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Spoke with Jack about this, uh, a little bit back. Uh, this piece is a standalone piece. We were before you, I don't know, a year or so ago, uh, creating what is shown as lots three A, lot one, and, uh, on a previous plan, and those lots have since been conveyed to the Weston Brothers. Uh, what's shown in the upper right corner, that small piece, that approximately half an acre piece, lot three C, was conveyed by deed, uh, to the adjacent property owner, uh, Mr. Johnson. So, uh, Jack suggested we prepare this plan, uh, try to rectify that a little bit where it was conveyed by deed and not by a plan. So, this plan defines the lot to be donated and it also defines that lot that was previously taken out of this parcel and conveyed by deed. So, um, that reduced plant I have in front of you, the parcel that's highlighted in green, is the parcel to be donated. It's, uh, eight point seven acres in total.
Anybody comments, Jack, or?
Um, no, I think it's wonderful and, uh, Mr. Griffith, his, his reputation precedes him and, um, uh, the Conservation Commission wants it and I, I know that they are asking that, uh, I talked to attorney Akable Bennett Page, your attorneys, and they'd like this, hopefully, if you could endorse this tonight so that the closing and the, uh, transgression can take place immediately.
So, this meets all the dimensional, dimensional requirements?
It's already, yeah, it's just clearing up what, in my opinion, should have been done instead of just a deed transfer, it should have been a, a... So, it's just cleaning it up and the attorney wa- art, your attorney would like that.
It, that, it looks fine to me. Does anybody have any, uh, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to endorse the Form A for, uh, Mr. Griffi- Griffith's generous gift to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
So, have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That, that's unanimous.
Are you taking this to record?
I was gonna ask you that.
Um, I'll let you know. We'll sign it after, I'll let you know. Maybe K and P is gonna do it, they probably have a runner that goes and do it.
Right. Right, they, we would have to get to them eventually, so if you have it, they can come here and grab it from you, sure.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have a, uh, next, next we have several receipts of plans. Uh, the first one is DHP Realty Trust. It's the Patriots Pine subdivision. It says Zero South Meadow Road.
Um, oh, this is, Mr. Chairman, this is a definitive, um, subdivision. You've already heard the preliminary subdivision and I, because of timing and you, that you didn't meet two weeks ago, um, I'm asking to schedule the public hearing for, um, November twenty-eighth at seven PM. We've already advertised because of timing, so...
Okay.
That's number one, I'd like you to officially establish that. And then, secondly, um, so, if you could do that and then I have a second comment, and I know that the applicant's, maybe attorney and or engineer would like to speak to the board.
All right, uh, like a motion?
Come back. Come back.
So, you want to set this for the twenty-eighth?
Yes, the seven PM.
And Jim's out of town?
Yeah.
And?
Um, the hearings are already scheduled for the twenty-eighth.
I'm deaf in my right ear, so...
The hearing's already scheduled for the twenty-eighth and you're only gonna have three members present and you need three members for a positive vote.
Right.
It's your choice.
I prefer to have as many as I could get.
So, I'm gonna suggest you have to have the hearing on the twenty-eighth. You can continue it without hearing evidence to the twelfth, is my suggestion. So, tech- technicality, you're gonna have to... Now, this is gonna complicate things.
So, you need a...
I need you to establish the hearing for the twenty-eighth at seven PM and then I'd like to talk about another issue.
Yep. Make a motion to establish the public hearing for Patriot Pine subdivision Zero South Main, South Meadow Road for November twenty-eighth at seven PM.
Second.
Uh, Chad's not here, can we... Chad's not here, can we continue or...
No, no, you're just establishing the hearing.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Chad's not here, so we could have to put it on the...
And we have the attorneys for both the seller and the buyer here. I think it'd be best if you guys could maybe talk to the board. There's a timing issue. This, it just got more complicated because the 28th is, you, they're choosing not to hear the, the issue. So, I don't know if you guys wanna address the board about the timing issue and a resolution.
Let's go. We'll go, we'll go with the three members.
Pardon me?
We'll go with three members.
You still have a timing issue that I think you wanna discuss with the board, I believe.
Yes, right. So, Sarah? Thank you, Chad.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us a few moments of your time informally. As you know, we have filed a definitive subdivision plan. We were before you a couple of weeks ago with a preliminary plan that has been refined to a definitive. We've been talking with Jack about our timing and because we're coming to the end of the year, into wintery weather, into holiday season, and everyone's schedules are getting tighter and tighter. We thought we would come tonight informally just to ask the board at the November 28th hearing, assuming that the board is going to want to do a site visit and potentially continue for further discussion. In the interest of addressing some of these timing issues, we would like to ask if the board would consider, number one, a special meeting for this particular project after we open and provide testimony on the 28th to potentially December 5th rather than wait the full two weeks to be continued to December 12th. If needed, we're presuming that a second hearing would be needed. So, that's one request that I'd like to ask for your consideration. The second of two would be to consider an informal site visit prior to November 28th or December 5th, whatever we could schedule, just in the interest of moving things along and, and not being out there in, you know, the peak holiday and cold weather and trying to kind of wrap things as the year closes out. So, those are our two respectful requests to the board before we formally open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, through you, if you are thinking of an informal site visit to the site, what dates are you proposing? Cause we have the holidays next week.
Right. I can make myself avail, available whenever the board members can be available. I work locally. I have two other colleagues that can be available. We can be as flexible as needed. The roadway has been staked, so it's, it's very accessible. I can come out separate times with each of you if need be or with the group. I really, I will, you know, be as flexible as need be.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to both of our planners, cause we're that great of a board, we need to... If we're gonna do an informal site visit, where we saw the preliminary site plan and would be going out to look, I know the entrance is staked, but if I wanted to see the drainage easement staked in the proximity to the neighbors' houses, Mr. Abatello's, I forget the other gentleman's name, Mr. Kavicki's house, that bog out front, would, would it be pertinent to ask that now?
Yeah, all right.
Even though?
You can ask anything you want.
They just heard me.
You know, I think... They've done a very good job on this subdivision from an engineering standpoint. We're having a technical review committee meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM. I'm getting very few comments. I have no idea what these butters' concerns are, but we can think of few, right? I think you've just named a few. I think there's a couple ways to skin this, so to speak. You could have a, a site visit before the 28th and then vote on the 5th, if that's amenable to you. You could have the hearing opened on the 28th, have the site visit in between them, then in the 5th and then vote on the 5th. So, yes to your, the answer to your question is yes, of course, though I'm sure they'll stake anything you wanna stake and they'll have it ready for you.
Just saying that without even opening up the public hearing, how do we get that message to them? Other than they just heard you.
Now, I know what Will's saying because they typically vote to have a posted site visit. You could vote to have a posted site visit. I understand, I think it would be cleaner and better if, A, I think if you could decide amongst yourself if you're willing to have a special meeting on the 5th, that would be the first decision. And if the answer's yes, then I think you could probably do a site visit in between the 28th and the 5th real quick.
That's the way I would like it, yeah.
And on the 28th, I can't be here the 28th, Stephen will be here. I'll have a memo, as we always do, about what the concerns are. We've already have had the TRC, I would hope, knowing the professionalism of Beals and Thomas, is that by the 28th, the town's issues will be addressed. You can't at this point address the butters' issues because you don't know what they are.
Right.
So, I think that would be the cleanest, but that's always up to you.
I think so too. They have the meeting first, they will try, no, I guess, as Jack said, are we willing to come back the December 5th for a special meeting?
I don't have a problem with the 5th. I should be good.
No, Jim, can't do it, eh?
No.
And we need, we'll leave, we need three. So, uh... So, we're gonna, so we'll probably have three...
Well, if Jim's not gonna be here the 28th, he can't sit anyway on the 5th.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. So, it'll at least, and can you make it December 5th?
I'm gonna have to at this.
Did you have plans, uh, did you travel out of Carver?
Chad's not gonna be able to be involved. Jim's gonna be out of town.
Can you do it, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Is he gonna be here on November 28th?
I'd like to talk about remote participation for that meeting where we have a sitting member that is a director butter and we have, have one of our members that will be away on business. I think we have a, have an avenue where we can use remote participation for this application where Jim will be away, but he could remotely come in. We enacted it, I think, twice before, once, once for Mr. Robinson when he was in Hawaii. Under certain circumstances where, where one of our members is a director butter, I think this gives us an avenue and we can check whether or not we can, we can enact that. I think that it's, it's a purgatory vote.
You can absolutely enact it because three is a quorum. You can't make a quorum with the remote, but you can add on to that, so to speak. Like the other hearing, you only have four and you needed four for a quorum and that's why Jim couldn't do remote participation.
Right.
In this case, he can.
Okay. So, I think, I think that there's, we should...
Could Chad do the remote too?
He can't.
If he, me?
He can't even. Chad can't cause he's in a butter.
Chad's in conflict.
And that's why I'm saying that we should, we should enact the remote participation for Jim where he's out of town. We have, one of the sitting members are director butter. I think it's imperative that we have the remaining four board members involved and I'm sure that you can be accessible. I don't wanna speak for you, but I know that you're interested in this project, so.
All right, then we'll somehow arrange it that way.
Is that...
That's great.
So, on the 28th, you'll have the hearing, Jim will, will phone in and at that time you can schedule your site visit and you can continue it to the 5th.
So, there's a small window between 28th and the 5th. Hopefully, we can work out a day that we can all...
If I'm gonna be remote on the 28th, the reason we were gonna push it to the 5th was, was why?
So, you can vote. Typically, you always have a site visit before you vote.
Oh, so it's, and you asked for a week earlier than the 12th?
Yes.
Gotcha.
We were assuming a continuation, so.
With the appeal period, assuming hopefully, I guess, in their mind that you approve it, there's an appeal period and they gotta meet all the, their concerns, their real estate concerns before the 31st.
We still can discuss it on the 28th now that I'll be remote. It's not just to automatically schedule it to the 20, to the 5th.
No, you have to continue.
I mean...
Has to be a vote to continue.
Is that what you mean?
But it can open and there can be discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
Right. Originally wasn't the plan just to open it?
Just to continue.
Open it to continue with...
Yes, but they decided they'd go with three, now they got four, so.
Yeah, I think so.
So, we'll actually be able to take, testimonial will arrange somehow to cue you in, okay.
Okay, so we're saying that on November 28th, we're gonna have the meeting and we're gonna, we're gonna, and Jim will be
Remote.
A remote participant.
Yep.
All right? And, and then we're gonna schedule a site visit and then we're gonna come back to this December 5th at a special meeting and will Jim be with us then?
No, he'll be...
He'll be remote again.
And that's okay.
So, okay, so we'll do it and, and that's all, then that's fine. We'll have to practice our remote particip, participation skills.
I'll get you, there's a declaration the chairman has to make. I haven't done this since I've been in Carver, but we'll get that for you and...
We've used it?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna thank you for scheduling the special meeting in behalf of the landowner, the A.D. Makepeace Company. There's an additional matter that Jack alluded to that's driving this. It's not just the winter weather, but if the hearing were to close on the 5th and the decision were filed promptly, then it's possible that the 20-day appeal period would expire with just enough time in calendar year 2017 to close this. So, that, that's part of what's motivating us.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to schedule a special meeting for December 5th at 7:00 for this project. So, at least we have it on our calendar.
All right, so, and we already scheduled it for 7:00, uh, November 28th to open?
Yeah.
And so, end December 5th at 7:00.
So, that's a motion, Mr. Chairman.
So, we have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second up.
Those in favor?
Aye.
So, that's unanimous and, and with one not here, Chad. So, I guess that, well, that takes care of that.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Thank you.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Remote twice. Not a problem.
Thank you, counselor. Stephen Cool, attorney service. He'd have to recuse himself of you.
Okay. All right, next we have Ediville Land Holdings on Pine Street, a receipt of plans.
Yes, I'd like to, this is for, they are repaving the parking lot, repaving the parking lot at Ediville and doing some, a lot of drainage, et cetera. And I'm recommending you have the public hearing on December 12th at 7:50.
Okay, that sounds good.
Make a motion to schedule the public hearing for Ediville Land Holdings for the project on Pine Street for December 12th at 7:15.
Second up.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of us here, unanimous. Next, Jamie Emerson, 57 Wenham Road.
This is a form A, I'm only asking you to receive it tonight. I have to admit, I haven't even looked. But it's on Wenham Road, I think you're all aware of Mr. Emerson's work. It looks like he's just adjusting a lot line, that's what he's doing. If you see parcel C, this piece is being transferred over here, or over here. Parcel C is to be conveyed and combined with parcel B here.
Just up in the corner, Jack?
Yeah, and parcel D on the bottom is, so they're swapping land.
They're swapping, yeah, swapping.
3A and, and 4A are swapping land, so nothing changes.
So, this is an A and I, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, this will be on your agenda for the 28th for a possible endorsement.
All right, next we have Christie Gibbs Kendrick, possible rezone on Tremont Street.
Mr. Chairman, I've been, I've known Christie for a long, long time. Hi, Christie.
My husband, Scott Kendrick.
Hi.
And she has a very interesting story. They have an interesting story about their parcel and past zoning and what they'd like to do for, at town meetings. They're looking for a rezoning, a possible rezoning. And I'll let her explain it. Did you bring something for them to look at?
I brought, um, the copy of the zoning map that I bought when I received the lease of my property, which...
Why don't you tell them where your property is?
Property's on 58, the last house in Carver.
366 Tremont Street.
Was it the same property that I purchased, repurchased from my parents? And this is the zoning map of my dad being... And at that time, the, from Seaford Street to Wareham, the Wareham Town Line all the way down Tremont had, was all commercial.
Could you point that out, please?
I wish I had a map for you.
Right here, Seaford Street where 58 goes up by the Little Red Smoke House, down to the Wareham Carver Town Hall. And my house is right before the bridge.
Okay, so it's hatched like that because it's in the historic...
No, because it's business commercial.
Oh, it's business commercial.
And sometime, although we didn't receive a notification that...
You looked on the computer and it's showing mostly resident, agricultural residential.
It's RA.
And we weren't notified of a zoning change at the time, so I always assumed it was commercial. And we have a big piece of property and we're thinking of not having that whole piece of property and we'd like to see it revert to commercial.
We also contacted Slocum Gibbs, who is our butter, as well as the next, the Berry guys. And we told them what we're up to. Gary, we've spoken to, the Berry guys, we haven't had much communication with.
Yep.
Although we've tried to contact them a couple of times, we haven't had much. But it seems to me that they were operating pretty much a commercial deal there.
Well, most of that end now is commercial. You know where the ready mix plant is and the African Creek.
And the traffic is commercial.
So, you're looking to convert it back from RA?
Yeah.
We'd like to, yeah.
I'd like to see that three, those three pieces. Yeah, I'd like to know the history. Why did this change? We don't know. We were never notified.
When?
Yeah, yeah. We had no idea. I assumed it was commercial when we got into this and then when we came up, we were notified here at the town hall that it wasn't and she took, she sent me back to, I can't remember the girl's name, Maureen or something. So, this was, so this map, yeah, revised July, of April of 88, I think.
So this was, so this map, yeah, revised July, of April of eighty-eight, I think. I think I spoke to Jack over the phone about this. He informed me about it and he, and, Jack?
Hi.
Hey, Jack. What do you have to say about this? What's the history? Do you have any? Well, I think Christie and her husband have proven that it used to be his own business. It changed, who knows why. I have no idea.
We don't know when.
We don't know when. I know as of ninety-six, it was residential. So sometime in between, what's that, eighty-something?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight and ninety-six, it was changed. We had a discussion about if they wanted to change just their property, that would be spot zoning, because you would have commercial and surrounded by residential. I suggested they reach out to the Berry guys. Berry guys are operating on agricultural exemption. I think, being generous, they're pushing the envelope on that exemption. And I strongly have encouraged them in the past to try to get a zone change so to legitimize their business more. And I suggested that they reach out to them and then have a swath of commercial land along Tremont that satisfies their needs, legitimizes the Berry guys, and maybe provides a well economic development opportunity in between, the Garrison property. I did talk to the town administrator about this. He loves the idea and strongly encourages the planning board to support an article that would engulf both the Berry guys, the Kendrick property, and the property in between.
But we'd have to be in agreement, or they would have to agree that they, they.
No, not really.
We could just do it.
You have, planning board is, is a legitimate petitioner for zoning, as are owners, as are ten of others, our ten citizens.
How would this affect those other two properties then? I mean, would that mean that they would have to pay more taxes or less taxes or?
I don't.
Would it make the land more valuable or less valuable?
The value of the land is based on the use, not on the zoning, unless it's vacant. So I guess it would, the property in between the two, it would make a little more valuable. Mr. Garrison property, Berry guys and their property, it would not change unless they change the use.
I spoke to Gary. He has no interest in, you know, he's, he, his primary thing was that it didn't affect his, his current use, which is going to continue, which is to leave it as true.
So you and Mr. Garrison, he, he wants to pursue this or not?
He said, he said that he doesn't wanna get in our way. He has no opposition to it. That's what's his.
Yeah, but if the planning board does not support a zoning article, then you have to have either ten citizens or the property owners petitioning. You can't, you can't petition Mr. Garrison property.
I understand.
It can't be a passive bystander.
Of course.
So he would have to be a signatory. And if it was just their two properties, it would no longer be spot zoning, because you'd have two parcels. I'm strongly urging you to, and maybe Stephen can reach out to the Berry guys, that property, it's a wonderful business. We want him to thrive, but.
It is a good business.
They're pushing the envelope. This would legitimize it. We wouldn't have any issue, any potential down-the-road issues. So town administrator wanted me to broach the broader subject, even though I know the Kendricks are here for just their subject.
It actually, it'd be a benefit to the town if we did.
Absolutely. And I didn't know, I mean, I was here ten and a half years. I never knew it used to be a business, but it's clear it was. It's, that's a zoning map.
So how do we proceed?
So, so we're gonna. You have some time, not a lot. I, I, I'm gonna suggest that the Kendricks and Stephen try to set up a time to meet next week. Stephen's brand new.
Welcome to the fire.
And, and talk about having a meeting with the Berry guys to see if they're willing to participate. If they're not willing, and then, you know, then at the twenty-eighth possibly, you, or the twelfth, you can discuss whether the planning board wants to sponsor the article or just let the property owners sponsor the article.
It could be done either way, but it would probably be more helpful at town meeting if the planning board endorses this.
It would. Yeah, I mean, I think whoever brought it up, I think a discussion has to be had with, and I know Mike Wainio very well and his wife. It, I, I would not encourage the board to try to rezone somebody's property if they didn't want it rezoned. That's kinda tacky. Let me just put it that way.
Yeah.
So I think you should make the best effort, one last effort, to see if the Berry guys will participate.
Absolutely.
And if you hit a dead end, then at least you have two parcels.
Now, with these two parcels, are they adjoint?
Yes.
Yeah, we're butters.
Oh, okay, so that's not in between?
Yeah, Slocom Gibbs is a butts my property.
In fact, the Berry guys is, would be the only not, the only non-commercial.
Right.
Entity. It goes commercial, the Berry guys, to the end of town.
Yeah.
Stephen's getting up the speed here on the map.
So I gotta, I gotta ask this question, Jack. So the, the permit that the Berry guys have is based under, under their agricultural use?
It's under an agricultural exemption.
Exemption, because they're, they're RA and they.
Do you have a copy?
Met underneath that criteria. Remember doing the hearing for it?
There, yes.
If, if they want to go and do this proposed change, what does that, um, does that change their permit?
Well, they would no longer need an agricultural exemption. They'd be a commercial entity. See, they're operating under an agricultural exemption and there's a certain percentage of their product which has to be locally grown and made. I haven't been there in three years, so I don't.
You should go, 'cause it's good.
Oh, the food's excellent.
He doesn't get in.
Excellent.
I am told, and, and, I'm trying to pick my words carefully. They're wonderful people, wonderful business. It would be, I think it'd be beneficial to them and the town to legitimize their use in, in a more legitimate way and maybe do more things they wanna do there than they haven't thought of.
True. So as far as defining a map or the zone or where we would draw the lines? I know we went through an extensive rezoning in North Carver and it took us time to do that. That would be done here?
I would say that Stephen and the Kendricks and maybe the Wainios would come, and the and Garrettsons would come up with a proposed zoning district.
Okay.
It would, it would not be spot zoning. It'd be three or two properties and go from there. If it is the Berry guys, then you'd have a continual swath all the way up to where the.
That's right, yeah. It would be commercial all the way.
Which is obviously what it used to be in the eighties.
That's exactly right. It says a thousand feet from Sipit Street all the way down. And again, we don't, we have no idea when or who or how it was changed. And as landowners, I don't, I don't understand how they could have changed the zoning without informing us in some way.
You'd have, you'd have to go through all the zoning maps as they changed.
Twenty years, I know. And again, I asked, that, I asked, they told me they didn't know. Again, we could like go back through the archives, but at this point, it's.
I, I'd advise you to act quickly. The deadline for town meeting is soon. Planning board can always have a placeholder if that's something they would like, but I would recommend you have something back to the planning board by the twenty-eighth. At least a plan.
Okay.
And then if they like it, they can ask for a placeholder. If they don't, then you're on your own. You can do a petition as property owner.
Okay.
And he's right here.
Okay.
But he's not back till Monday. So if you wanna sidebar and get a meeting, that's.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for the time.
Sorry, Stephen.
No, no worries. This is what we do, Stephen.
Thank you very much.
All right.
What else happened to our agenda? All right, next we have Peter Allegrini, a possible zoning, possible zoning signage. He was notified, he requested in writing to be here, as you can see, and he didn't, and he isn't here.
Next.
So we go on.
Okay. Move on.
Planning board member notes. Well, let me start out. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, I'm very happy to, to see Stephen with us tonight and, and hopefully he'll continue working with us for many years to come. And also thank Jack for, for, for taking over and, and filling in, in between planners. And I don't know if Jack has spoken to Stephen yet, but I guess there was talk about if Jack and Stephen could work together on, on, you know, to get you going, if need be, if need be, however you feel about it. So again, just very.
I'll be leaving on you, Jack.
So, so again, we're happy to have a, a new planning director with us and I, I don't know what your, you have, will have other tasks other than just working with the planning board, I believe.
I do believe so as well. I think the breadth of those tasks have yet to be fully defined to me, but.
Find out Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, busy day Monday, won't it?
It all depends if he decides to come back on Tuesday.
Anyone else have anything to say?
I do, I, I'd like to thank Jack for all his help. Again, you've been a great asset for this town for years and a lot of stuff that's happened here has been encouraging and you've seen, reaped the benefits of it. You've seen what we've done. Stephen, I'd like to welcome you. I think you, you'll find that Carver is a great place to work for. You'll find that the people in this town are unique and they are in dire need of some good guidance that, that they'll bring to you for knowledge and background of what the history of this town is. And you'll end up being here for a long time. You'll enjoy this town. And you'll enjoy the people that are here, so. Welcome aboard and you can start tomorrow.
Soggers would like that, but.
It wouldn't be the first time that I called a planner before he actually walked in the door and said, hey, what about this? So, thank you for coming on board.
Welcome Stephen as well. And Jack, thank you for all of your time here. And I know I, you helped me a lot, so.
Thanks, sir.
I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Chad, so good to see you. I want you to.
Gotta speed this up, 'cause I'm not doing good right now.
Okay, planning director notes. We got McCarthy towing and. Yes, there's a, as you remember McCarthy towing or actually the user of that, the trucking business, you had given them some marking orders and the first one was to meet with the conservation agent. You'll see a memo in your packet that they have met. They walked the site. There are some abuses there. He's expressed his willingness to correct those abuses and come in front of the conservation commission. I assume that's what he's gonna do before he files with you guys.
Okay.
I just wanted to know that. Two other things. These are both coming from the town administrator, solar bylaw. He wanted to know or have a discussion with the planning board about the dimensional requirements, the setbacks, the two hundred feet. And he wanted me to see if the board would be willing to have some, to, to present the town meeting an article that would give the board some discretion on those setbacks. And I think the example he used is if it's in the middle of the woods and there's no butters, why do we need to have a two hundred foot setback? That, that type of discussion. I said I, I actually, he had asked me to do it the last meeting and I forgot, to be honest with you. Or maybe Jim wasn't here and I wanted to make sure Jim was here, 'cause I know it's near and dear to Jim's heart. So here it is.
Who wanted this? I, I missed it. Who wanted the discussion?
Town administrator.
Oh.
Had asked me to put it on the agenda just for a discussion. And I think, we did not have a very long discussion. I'm not here long enough. But I think what he's talking about is that when an application comes in front of you, instead of, and they want relief from the two hundred foot setback, instead of requiring them to go to ZBA, that you would adopt a bylaw that gave you the authority to waive that if it met certain criteria.
So you, don't we have that ability right now?
No.
No. We, we have to strictly stick to.
Correct.
The setback requirements. So the only way to get relief from it is to go to the ZBA.
Correct.
I don't know, I guess, but we could discuss it. We could discuss it.
I mean, I, I would like to, you know, this for Stephen's heard of his. I'm not here very long, so I, I don't know what to tell you other than that December fifth is the deadline and he's looking for a decision to, for.
Oh, right now?
Well, maybe not today, but by the twenty-eighth.
Whether we'll have a discussion at the, at our next meeting about this?
He would like a determination whether it's something you'd like to pursue by, yes, by December fifth.
Would this have to go to, so this wouldn't have to go to town meeting?
It would absolutely have to go to.
Would have to go to town meeting.
The zoning amendment, absolutely, one thousand.
Does he want us to sponsor that amendment?
That is correct.
Okay.
I, and to the town administrator's credit, he appreciates the sensitivity of it.
Yep.
And in his mind, he's taking it out of the ZBA's purview and putting it in yours. And you can always say no.
That means we don't end up in court again.
I don't know if that was, maybe that was the impetus. I, I honestly didn't have that discussion.
Okay. Would, would, would the members be willing to discuss this or?
Yeah, we're gonna, I don't have a problem having a discussion about it. Who's, is he coming in to plead the case for this or what?
I think I am, at least, you know. It's an unusual, Stephen's taking over, I'd be, I'm gonna suggest this, that it seems like you're at least open a little bit. Maybe if Stephen has it on Monday or Tuesday, he can meet with Michael, get more specific on what Michael's looking for, bring it back to you on the twenty-eighth, and then you can decide, okay, that makes sense, go for it. Or no, we need more information, or you hate it. Something like that. I don't mind having a discussion.
Discussion. I don't know how, how far that would go, though. I mean, we have two members that were on the, the.
Bylaw committee.
The bylaw committee and one, and, you know, they were working for the planning board. I was the chairman of the planning board, so, I mean, so you could have, you have three people here that are sort of gonna adhere to, to what came up. But then again, if this goes to town meeting, it actually gives the people the right to, to see if they wanna change this. So it takes it out of our hands in those special cases where.
So I'm not going to tell a rain, do you?
Okay. I mean, I.
I just, I just remember the long, long days that we had and this would be. I just, I just remember the long, long days that we had and this would be, this would be good for Stephen to be up, up to speed on. The bylaw committee that was put in place, I chaired, Jim was one of the members that wrote this bylaw with us and that we presented and brought to town. It was a very controversial issue through the town and we came up with this bylaw and the setbacks were... Well, let's just say that it was almost like it was not even, it got changed at town meeting floor.
Right.
It wasn't what, really what the, the board had, the committee had recommended to bring to town meeting, to change at town meeting floor. So it's a, it's a hot potato. We've had some issues with solar projects that have come to this board where, where the setbacks was an issue. And every time it seems when it comes to the board, it's an issue. There's a 200-foot buffer and there was a reason behind it. So I'll leave it at that. We can talk more about it. I'm sure Michael will bring you up to speed, Jack will bring you up to speed. It'll be colorful, that's for sure.
I, I don't see where a discussion would hurt.
It's not going to hurt.
Whether it's, you know, whether it's going to be fruitful or not, that's, that's another thing, but...
Yep.
All right, so let's, so we can, we can do a discussion. So the next is inclusionary housing bylaw.
As you know, especially the chairman, we have an inclusionary bylaw, which means 15% of any multifamily or subdivision development has to be affordable. The last project that was, you just discussed, Patriot Pines, had some concerns about that language that we have in the bylaw. Now, that bylaw was written, I don't know, it was seven years ago, I, I can't remember. A long time, Bruce was the chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee at the time. Their attorney brought up some flaws in the bylaw and there are a few discrepancies and a little redundancy. And so Michael, again, Michael Milonowski, because that's who I was talking to on this, suggested maybe that's something you want to bring up to clean it up and to ask Stephen to take a look at it. I would strongly urge Stephen to maybe talk to SERPAD to see if they could help, SERPAD's our regional planning agent, to see if they'll help him clean it up. I don't know if you're going to be able to get it in time for this town meeting, but I promised Michael I'd put it on the agenda. Stephen's here and that's maybe something on his plate to, to work on. I, I read his critique of it and he is, there's some definite legitimate concerns about some redundancy in there. You guys, it certainly has worked, but, so that's all. That's enough, I'm tired.
Thank you, Jack. We have the minutes of October 10th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 10th, 2017, as written.
I'll second that.
So you have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not here.
And Chad? And Jim wasn't here, so it's just Will, myself and Kevin.
Mr. Chairman, if I could butt in for two seconds, I'd like to get back to the point of having all this document sent to us prior to our meeting, so we're not rushing through to glance at the minutes and stuff. We used to get those, all that stuff emailed to us before, so I'd like to do that.
We got the, I, I got the agenda. I got the pine.
You didn't get the minutes?
Didn't get the minutes.
You're going to need to talk to Jill about getting a packet to them via email.
She's usually pretty good.
Yeah, I know.
It was just the last one, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I, we got, I got the pine thing, but I think it was a special attachment that came through, so I don't...
I don't know.
Yeah, I even had my wife, who's far better at the computer than me, trying to look for them.
I always, my practice to scan everything and get it to you back is a much easier way than mailing it, so, and then have the part copy if you need it.
Okay.
All right, so we'll see what we can do about that. Our next meeting date will be December 12th, that's 7 o'clock. No, November 28th. Sorry, November 28th. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think that was unanimous.